Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Pono Select Board Meeting, July 11, 2024, at 6:15 PM. Sorry, we're a little late. We had to wait for a board member to get here. They had a slight issue. All right. Thank you for coming, everybody. Like to call the meeting to order. Board member road call, Angie Rollin'.
Carl Stromeyer, Jamie Percy.
I'd like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One of these days, I'm just gonna sit down, and there'll be nothing there.
Approval of the agenda, which we need to change and add a few things. Five will be public comments, six will be approval of a minute, seven will be warrants, eight will be correspondent letter from Nathan Fowl. We're gonna do 8A, which is second class for panel beer and wine. Nine updates for town officials, ten requests from the Bennington County Conservation District to use meeting room space for the stormwater forum. Ten A is the ACO questions. Eleven is wastewater treatment facility, request for purchase of a new mower. Twelve is CAT TV contract discussion and possible action. Thirteen is Bennington County Sheriff Department contract discussion and possible action. Fourteen is job description reviews and approval. Fifteen is policy view and possible, but we're gonna remove that this week.
Yes.
All right, and then sixteen will be public comment, and seventeen will be adjourned. May I please have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
Second with changes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment, Hannah?
No answers.
All right. Approval of minutes of June 27, 2024 Select Board Meeting.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Warrants, accounts payable, land purchased, June 27, 2024, for $125,000.
So move.
Second.
I'm not used to, there's nobody else here. I'm waiting for somebody else to do it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Accounts payable, July 5, 2024, for $47,309.75.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Accounts payable for July 12, 2024, for $69,144.54.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll for July 5, 2024, in the amount of $12,871.45.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll, July 12, 2024, in the amount of $11,776.10.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, I just wanna do a point of order that both the payrolls on our agenda did state the twelve.
Dates, yes. I was just gonna apologize that.
So just wanted to let people know out there if they're at the S R agenda.
And I was thanking Hannah for correcting those on Angie's thing.
Yeah, cuz.
Thank you.
Well, I want the session as well.
No, you did, but it made it right.
No, but I mean, on our minutes and everything, that you sent me my packet.
On the agenda, wrong.
I'm just.
Oh, on the agenda is wrong. I see what you're saying.
I didn't know if this is the one with that.
It is. Okay.
That's why I just wanted.
Correspondent, a letter from Nathan Fowl for requesting to be appointed to the Parks and Rec Committee. Did everybody read his letter? It was pretty much the same letter that he had sent for the conservation.
I did have one question. I did not realize there was an opening.
There's, there's lots of openings at Parks and Rec.
There's only what, four?
There are three members right now. Be four if you accept Nathan's.
Right.
We need to get that on the site, cuz it does, if you look at the site, it just looks like there was only three members. There's no vacant.
Oh.
So how many do they hold normally?
Seven altogether.
Seven altogether, correct?
I think so, but I've never seen a full committee, so I'm not sure.
Okay. Can we check into that and get that on the website, please?
I thought there was seven on that, but I could be wrong.
And it's a committee.
Make a motion to accept Nathan Fowl's letter for request of the Parks and Rec Committee.
Um, I'll second it.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, 8A, second class for panel beer and wine. That used to be Dwyer's. The name is changed.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's only one, right?
Yes, there was only one, yep.
Okay. Updates from the town officials. Tara, do you have any?
I have a couple. So my updates were just that the land purchase for a right-of-way was successful. And another exciting piece of info is that our fiscal year 23 audit has been finalized, been completed, and they have already started on FY '24, which is much faster and on point where we should be since we just closed the fiscal year. So that's exciting for us, cuz we've been, we've been behind a few years.
Yep.
Um, finally caught up.
Awesome.
And then I have one from Conservation Commission. Just a few bullets that the ConCom is working in partnership with the town, Parks and Rec, and other members of the VORIC Working Group to advance the development of the town forest management plan required as part of the PTV-VHCV easement for the VORIC grant. To get to know our community and understand our resources and current issues, we have been meeting with a variety of people involved in environmental stewardship in our region, including Michael Fernandez of the Bennington County Conservation District, members of the Hura and the Williamstown ConCom, Jim Henderson of BRCRC, and Donald Campbell of the Preservation Trust of Vermont. We have identified the need to inventory panels, environmental and historical, cultural assets per our methods. And I will say, they are a great group. They really have made great strides with just a few meetings. Getting to know different people and different, different resources.
Um, the inventory is just for the mountain land, or is it a total inventory?
It's a, it's a panel, panel-wide inventory. I think for a while, they'll be focused on the land, but they have a, a general focus on all of panel. I know they've been working on identifying different resources in the town or different hiking trails or different fishing spots, or they're trying to come up with different things that people will wanna, wanna know.
Very good.
And I think that's all I have for updates for today. Thank you.
Request from the Bennington County Conservation District to use a meeting room space for stormwater. What day is that?
So that is August 4, and Jeannie Alexander sits on the Bennington Conservation District. She's a part of that group, and she is one who actually made the request. She came in and made it, so I don't have a formal email or anything, but it would be August 4 from 12:04, and I don't mind being here to let them know.
I'll probably be here anyway.
And do all the, you know, be here while they're meeting and close up after.
And so that means there's no conflict or?
No, no conflict. It's a Sunday.
Yeah, I just.
Yep. No, I appreciate you checking. Okay, what would the board like?
I'll make a motion to allow them to use it.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 10A, ACO question.
Okay, so as we know, Eddie, our constable, is our new ACO, and he has had a couple of complaints come up already of people thinking that there's a dog at large, or they've seen a dog at large that they feel is being neglected, looks skinny, or looks neglected or abused in some way. His question is sort of what does he do with those cases? So if he goes out and there's an owner, I would expect you bring the dog back to the owner. Does the board want him doing investigations? Does, does the board, let me put it a different way. Does the board want him to contact a humane officer or the insurance department, or the state police? Or do nothing? I mean, I think those are the options. You either give the animal back and do nothing. He could contact someone, or he could refer the complainant to someone. I'm just looking to see what.
Well, first of all, like, if anybody calls in something, then our due diligence is to go investigate it.
Yes.
Correct, but he's not, but he's not trained to investigate it. Well, he has to turn around. What he should do would be to either refer the person to somebody who is a humane officer that they can remake that report to them.
All right, let me rephrase what I.
I can't. Okay.
I'm sorry.
In my statement as far as investigate, if I, if I get a call, I go down and put my eyes on the area.
Right.
That's where I'm talking, as far as an investig.
I would say, because Eddie hasn't gone down there and actually talked to everybody or seen it.
See, I think he needs to check out the complaint.
Right, you follow up on the complaint, thank you.
Investigating, that's just checking out the complaint.
If your dog's running loose.
Okay.
And that's what I'm saying.
If the dog is running loose.
Dog is running loose, and yes, I told him if the dog is running loose, he picks a dog up and he does his job.
Right.
But his job is not to investigate animal cruelty. No.
Correct.
I understand that. I want you guys to reiterate that for me.
I will make.
Because I'm not sure that our residents understand that either.
Right, so instead of saying investigate, I should have said follow up on a complaint.
Follow up on a complaint of a loose dog.
Right, or whatever the incident.
Of a loose dog, because he does not have, he does not have the authority to investigate humane cases, cuz he's not properly trained through the state of Vermont.
And he's not a humane officer.
That's correct.
Not a humane officer.
He identifies an owner. The dog goes back to the owner.
Yes.
Regardless.
Regardless.
The only thing he should be speaking to them about is whether or not they're registered, and he can kindly ask they keep the dog on leash and all that, and he can eventually fine them for that if they don't, but it is not, it's, it's not in his purview to.
No, correct.
He can ask them.
Would be cruelty or feeding or any of that kinda stuff.
Correct. And if there's a resident out there that has a problem with a neighbor, or they think cruelty, I think their best bet would be to contact the state troopers and let them investigate.
Okay. That's, that's.
Does that answer your question?
That, that answers, yes, I believe.
Are you happy with that?
I think so. Hannah, is Eddie on?
Eddie, what?
Eddie, do you need any more clarification, or do you have more questions?
Hey, guys. I, I mean, you know, this is like what we talked about before. So I'm totally aware, I'm not a humane officer, completely no question about that. A big question about this was involvement of a humane officer. So I came into contact with one because, well, a lot of these complaints are kind of compounded, and you know, it started very simple. A dog is at large, okay, I'm gonna go respond. And then I am seeing pictures that it's malnourished, that there may be puppies involved somewhere in the area. No one can identify the owner. My concern is collecting this dog and impounding it is going to cause more damage to puppies in the area. You know, and I, I don't wanna, I can't look away, as, I mean, under the state, we have a duty to at least follow up with the neglect or abuse evidence in front of us. So you know, just, I just wanna clarify, I can at least contact a humane officer to involve him to lead an investigation on his own. And in fact, I had one refer to Tara on email a little, like an hour ago, that this is, this comes at no cost to the town and no liability.
Oh, did he respond? I didn't see a response.
Yes, he did.
Okay, I didn't see.
Yeah. You got me at no cost.
Just have to make sure that we are.
And I also wanna make sure that we don't ask you to do something that's outside your purview, cuz I don't wanna put you in a liability risk issue, issue. You kinda know what I mean?
Absolutely. I totally agree with you. You know, it's just, these cases, I'm finding very quickly, they're not very cut and dry. You know, I had, my first one was very cut and dry. A dog is running loose, had a very nice conversation with the owner. Hey, you know, this is why your dog can't be out. You gotta, you know, get it registered, you know, give him a verbal warning, great chat. Call today, very different story. So that, that's why I'm just asking. I don't wanna overstep my lines either. I don't wanna introduce any liability to anyone, myself included. I just wanna make sure we're, we're covering residents the best we can within our roles.
And I, I see the email that he won't charge us, and that's, that's great. But keep in mind, these animals will go into our kennel, and they become our custody while a court case is happening or an investigation is happening by that humane officer. And we are on the hook to care for them. We can't even turn them over to humane society at that point. We have to, we have to keep them and take care of them.
Right.
Which is where a lot of the costs.
Costs is coming from.
Because we are not a humane society. We are a just, a just aboard and kennel for stray dogs.
Right, that's right, because, correct.
Cuz that is all we have the capability.
Facility for.
Right, exactly. Does that answer your question, Eddie?
I believe so. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night. Okay, moving on to 11, wastewater treatment facility request to purchase new mower and possible action. Did everybody read their?
Yes.
I have it. Will I find it? I read it. It was 3,000. I have it over here. Thank you.
Maybe buying for more.
It's. Up to that. In Kawasaki.
Forty-two inch.
Hydrostatic gas drive, zero-turn riding lawnmower.
On your.
I hope they don't have any hills to do.
And I just.
Is it just for right there?
It's just for right there, yeah.
Oh, then that's, that'd be perfect for, for right there.
Because they maintain their own property and the road inside the fenced-in area that's not part of our own contract.
Right.
So.
And she has it within her capital budget to do it.
Yes, and she'd be happy with it. If she's happy, I'm happy.
So can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Go ahead.
Nope, that's the motion, fine.
If she purchases a cadet for 3,000.
Right. I'll try not to be lazy.
I put enough.
Need the motions, you have to make the motion.
I make a motion that we authorize the wastewater to purchase a new mower, which is a cub cadet for the price of $3,299. I guess that's it.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twelve, CAT TV contract discussion and possible action. So, did everybody read the conference?
Yep.
All right, I have a question on the closed caption, and the first one. Do you have that in front of you?
I have the, the contract, yeah, but are you talking about the letter or the contract? Cuz I have, I can pull the other one too.
I have so many open on the bottom, I can't find it.
Proposed.
So, and the first letter, they talk about funding will continue to carry through December of 2024, beginning in January 2025, the town will be charged $70 a month per quarter for closed captions. So that's $280. And then on the second page, or the second one that they sent, on paragraph five, it says that on June 24, the town will be charged $400 a year for closed caption. So that didn't seem right to me.
Yeah, it's going up $120 for the following year.
No, because, because what Angie's saying is after January 1, if you read the first one.
Right, I understand.
Paying.
Right.
Correct.
And on the second one, it says we just pay a flat fee.
Of $400 a year.
On the second.
Right.
I don't.
Two-year contract.
I don't see where you're talking.
Oh, this is a two-year contract?
But the way she's reading it, that's how I'm interpreting.
No, this is a one-year contract.
No.
July 1, 2024 to June 31st, June 30th, 2025.
All right.
In the letter, it says, "Our launch of live closed captioning on our channels was delayed due to technical issues, therefore the funding that had been set aside will carry us forward through December of 2024," just like you said, "Beginning in January 20, the town should anticipate a $70 closed caption fee per quarter."
Per quarter, not.
I don't know where you're seeing the $400 thing, no.
No, Angie did that $70 per month. It's not, it's $70 per quarter.
Can I see this for one second?
Yeah, quarter.
So this was the first letter, the 70 dollar. This is the first letter of $70, right? Here's. CAT TV will offer closed caption of live replayed on meetings on Channel 1085. The cost of this service will be covered by CAT TV through December 24, beginning January 2025. It will be $70 per billing quarter, okay? And then when you went down to this one, paragraph five. Where's my glasses? Right here. Beginning June 2024, CAT TV will bill the town with $400 per year for closed caption.
I see that, no, yeah.
Okay, so that was a little confusing.
Right, there's two different.
There's two different amounts.
And two different dates.
And two different dates, exactly.
So.
I knew I read it. I knew I wasn't crazy.
No, you, you read it correctly.
Okay. So I don't think we can decide on this until that is corrected and we have the exact dates. My other concern, I feel, this is my opinion, what I've heard from some other people in town. I would really like to know how many people actually watch CAT TV, because what they're offering is Channel 1085.
Yeah.
Putting it on their page, which we put on our page, putting it on Facebook, which we put on our Facebook, archiving it, which we archive, correct? So if we got rid of them, the only thing that would not happen would be Channel 1085.
Right.
Would be on cable.
The, the public, the public access.
We're on public access.
On, on the TV.
Public access, on the TV.
That's.
So.
There's some people out there that use that versus.
Right.
Computers.
I just wish we knew how many.
They don't have.
Even if it's just a handful, I get it.
They don't use computers.
But it's just frustrating, I think.
You would like to know the metrics.
Right.
The metrics, yeah. And, you know. So I think we should table this until next meeting, until you can get an answer back on the $400. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah, cuz we need to know on, on, on that.
Now, um, closed caption. Let me go out on a limb. I'm just gonna ask a question. I don't know if we can or not. Is it possible to have a question, a thing to set up? I don't know if we can piggyback on a voting day, cuz.
Survey?
Oh, a survey, if they watch it?
Just say, you know, and, and simple yes, no, do you watch CAT TV on your television?
Or like something like, do you watch town meetings or?
Or, or yes.
Selective meeting, like do you use CAT?
Town business.
Town business on.
Yes, thank you.
I don't see why we couldn't have a survey.
I mean, can we ask Julie and just make sure there's no rules against us doing a separate thing on that same, because we have a lot of people that walk in and they can.
Well, I mean, you're asking the people that are voting, so, I mean.
Yes.
And you could turn around and put a survey in a couple, you know, like we did with the.
But it's for people that are using CAT TV and our computers, it's gonna be hard to reach them if we can't, if we don't use voting day or something like that.
That's why I was suggesting the voting day.
And I'm just questioning.
More people come in.
Only because cable has gotten so expensive, and medium has come in, and a lot of people are on Fidium now and have gotten rid of their cable.
Right.
So I'm just wondering if it's feasible in this society up with today's world.
It's a good question.
If it's feasible for the town.
I think that's a long-term question that we.
I know voting isn't a hundred percent.
I think that, I think, here's the way I look at it. I think that we're looking at two different discussions here. We're looking at the contract discussion.
Yes.
And we're looking at Angie's discussion, which is more of a long-term.
Right.
Exactly what we should be really doing for the future.
Right, but for now, I want the answer on the $400 for our next meeting.
Yeah.
So we can decide on the contract.
It all comes down to the money.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thirteen, Bennington County Sheriff's Department contract discussion and possible action.
So you all know, he, Sheriff Gully responded. They changed the contract to reflect 25 hours a week. He will not add the extra language, how long, because he feels like that would represent neglect of duty. Like if they cap their hours and they're called for something and they don't do it, that's neglect of duty. So he's not willing to put that part in the contract, but he's willing to put, he's willing to try to stay within that, but it's not on the contract like you guys wanted.
Regardless of whether that was, he flipped that in or not, I would, yeah, I would feel more comfortable if we all were here to vote on this. Yeah, I got that on there.
Jamie, you got it?
Yeah, I already read it, yeah.
Okay.
I read it too, so just so everybody knows, they changed the contract to 25 hours. Seventy, yeah, per our request with 15% late or evening or weekend, which that only equals to about two hours in the whole month at 72.50 an hour. So that.
Hour a week.
Yeah. Two point something hours.
Yeah, two point something hours. So that's $7,250 a week, and if you times that by 52 weeks, that's $94,250 per year. So.
I mean.
Is what we budgeted for.
But this, it comes back to, again, we've got two different questions in front of us. We need to have a longer-term question, exactly what the people of home want for their, what they want.
But we're talking about the contract.
Now, the contract right now for the state police auxiliary, oops, excuse me, wrong one.
The Bennington County Sheriff's Department.
Bennington County.
They're acting like state, they're, they're, they're basically acting like the state police auxiliary, so.
So, what would you like to do?
I would like to table this until we're all here. Unless there's, unless, that's the spot I would like, but I would go, I will go wherever the board wants to go. Because I think that we all should, unless, unless there's a pressing need that we need to have this, because the way I assume, they're, they're all, they're, they're still, they're still doing their service right now. Am I correct there?
I, I don't know for sure. I have seen them in town.
I have seen that when I was Val and Hay.
What they're doing for hours.
When I was Val and Hay last week, which was after the 4th, they were patrolling our roads. So I don't think we need to rush this at this point just to get a contract to them if they're already doing the service.
So are they still working off the old contract, though, by 30 hours a week? That's, that's my only question when you, when you say what you're saying. But.
I don't know. I mean, I could reach out and ask, but you guys.
I have no problem with moving forward. I think Mike made it clear, and so did Bill when we talked about this last meeting with our discussion, that we wanted to change to 25 hours.
That's my feeling. They, they changed it, they, they didn't do 100% of what we asked, but they did put the 25 hours in per our request, because that's what we budgeted for. So they've given towards us also. I mean, that's part of the negotiation, I feel, but.
Well.
That's my opinion. I mean, I'm willing to make a motion to accept it. If I don't get a second, then.
I'll give you the second. I mean, we're gonna, but we're gonna open for discussion? I will make this caveat on this contract, that we will not exceed. I mean, we might exceed by a little bit, but we will not exceed what we budgeted for. If it comes up close. If it comes up close, I'm going to make a motion that we send them their thirty day notice and then they're done.
And he mailed it and he's saying he can't legally put that in the contract because if we were close to one hundred hours and then. The state attorney sent him here, he legally can't tell them.
But what he's saying is we will get rid of the contract when it gets closer.
To the ninety four thousand, you only have ninety four thousand.
If I if we're if we're if we're at.
That we wouldn't use them at all for those moments.
And I don't mind going, I shouldn't say this because he'll hear us, but I don't mind going over a little bit. But we're not going to be in a position where we're going to go over our budget, the amount that we went over our budget this year.
We're over what, thirty? Two?
And and we're still waiting.
And you're still waiting for a month.
Waiting for an invoice.
And and I don't think people in the town pound is gonna tolerate it because we're already talking, what, we're gonna have an increase in our taxes to flow? Fifteen percent? People are gonna go freaking nuts in a couple of months when they when they really come to realize exactly how much their taxes are gonna go up. So.
And that's true, because there's a.
Fourteen percent of that is beyond our control.
But I'm talking on our budget. I'm not talking on this, I'm talking our own, what our our own taxes are gonna go. Not what the school's gonna go up. School's gonna go nuts, especially if everybody does what they're gonna, I think they're gonna do.
All right, so do I have a motion on the table? Did you make a motion? All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Correctly, I.
You can, you want to sign?
Yeah, you sign it.
Who's gonna be the, who's gonna be the contact person?
It says on there. Chair and me.
Should be or.
You're in their absence. Does it say that on that? I want that. To be the case.
Because I don't want, I don't want Tara or Mike.
We already brought that up when they were here, that.
Yeah, they, when he emails, he emails both. Yes.
I I I learned that things aren't said, they're forgotten.
When you're over fifty, sometimes that doesn't work either.
Yeah, like when, like today's not Wednesday, but Thursday. Granted, I was at the hospital, but hey.
I wasn't gonna let everybody know that you did that.
What do I care? Dear God almighty. I'm the hermit of East Pano. What are you talking about?
We're all human and you did have a situation that you were dealing with, so.
I have that every day. This is my life.
And just for the residents of the town, just be mindful when you contact the sheriff's department. Through email or complaint, we're getting charged for it. So if it's something that you think that the state police. Should handle, please contact the state police. Just be mindful of that. Thank you very much.
Or possibly something that the board could be looking, make it be aware of. Contacted, send an email or contact the town office so we we're aware of the situation.
If you send the sheriff's department, I'm gonna just say five emails in a week's time on a problem that you're having. About an ordinance or a neighbor. If it's something that the town could handle, let us know about it. Just be mindful that every time you email them or call them or contact them in a way. The town of Pano is being charged. Just be mindful of that, please. Thank you very much. All right, number fourteen, job description review and approvals.
So I sent them all to you. Most of them are the same as what you've all seen before. Darcy did hers, Joel has looked at his. The only ones I didn't do are Tom and Ron at the transfer station because I didn't hear back from him. I didn't wanna just move ahead with the other ones. So we'll wait to hear from him, but all the rest of them should be. Good to go. We've never had a zoning administrator job description. We've also never had an assessor clerk.
Do you want to do a description?
Julie or altogether?
Uh, I would like to do the, at least the zoning administrator individually. I mean, some of them we could do together, some of them I'd like to, because of the, because of the job I'd like to do.
Okay, so animal control was just approved, so you don't have to do that one. They just need signatures. You could do wastewater together, probably.
Wastewater and Joel.
That's a assessor clerk.
And I know Tom was busy right there around the first of the month because he's changing all the prices and stuff.
Yeah, and they've been doing warmups and stuff. I know, it's it's not a big deal, I guess. So here's the wastewater ones, the three for wastewater.
That was assessor's clerk is going down through.
There's this one fly in here. He's gonna die.
It's driving me nuts.
Driving me nuts. Wastewater department.
We had to buy a fly swatter.
All right, so.
I'm just, we're gonna look at them with.
I'm very happy with them.
Yeah, I looked at them all already. Very happy with them all. I just wanted to make sure that if you want to do them separately, together.
Well, I just.
I think you could do them all together, just list them.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, I want to see Mike's.
There's the highway ones, here, we're going to administer them. I forgot stuff that Hannah does, the clerical type stuff.
Okay.
All right, so wastewater, we have three, correct? So I have three wastewater. What is your pleasure on the wastewater?
I make a motion to accept the job description for the waste, the Department of Wastewater.
So you have chief operator, assistant chief operator, and.
Water, wastewater operator, maintenance mechanic. Those three are in my motion.
All right.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Town panel assessor clerk.
And that was taken basically from the NAMRIC agreement that we have. It lists all the things that she should be doing versus what he does. And then also I added like the math.
I'll make the motion, second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
So.
A zoning administrator?
You said you had a question or no?
I had one question. Um, and that's probably when, this is his job description. When he has his job review, who does his review? Is it the select board or is it?
Oh, the select board or planning.
Or planning, I was just curious. It doesn't make any difference on this.
And even DRB.
Planning makes a.
What if it was a member from each?
Or maybe that would be, I mean, that's just some, I'm just, because we need to think about that coming up. Because we've never, never, as far as I know, it's never happened with Mike.
Or any zoning for that matter.
Well, yeah.
Not just Mike.
Right, Mike, yeah, we don't. Haven't had a steady process.
No, right. And I think we've come a long ways. We're working on it. We're getting on it.
I'll make the motion.
All right, these are all the highway ones.
And wait a minute, any discussion? All in favor?
Sorry, I was trying to rush her.
That's okay.
Highway foreman, highway worker, and then the buildings and grounds is on the highway.
Make the motion for the highway department and employees job description.
I'll second it.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Last one is health officer.
And looking forward to that, so.
We already did, yep.
A health officer.
That's all by statute.
Because that's what is running. I'll make a motion that we approve the job description for the health officer.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Need signature.
Just put that there, they all need signatures, but we can. Sign our light away here.
All right, public comment. Any public comment, Hannah? Hey Eddie, just remember to state your names, please. Go ahead, Eddie. I'm sorry, Eddie, we can't hear you.
Now we can.
Now we can. Oh, no, we can't.
You're cutting it and I'll add.
Can you send Tara a quick text of what you'd like to say?
Or Hannah.
Or Hannah? Or put it in the chat.
Hey, apologies, can you guys hear me now? There we go. I I ended my video feed. I hope that helps.
I'm so sorry, Eddie. You're breaking in and breaking out again. I'm so sorry.
I left you space on the other side, but that's fine.
Oh, I didn't know that. I'm sorry. Try again, Eddie.
Because you're the assistant.
Eddie, I'm so sorry. We can't hear you. You're breaking up.
You said we had a problem.
Breaking up, Scotty.
How's that?
Kind of. For a minute.
Kind of.
You wanna call my cell phone? I'll put you on speaker on the table.
Here, how's that? Better clarity? I won't move. There we go. To follow up on, I don't wanna stay on animal control all night, but to follow up on something, so you know. I just wanted to get it confirmed, so you know, I can't handle directly cases of animal abuse and neglect, that's clear. I just wanted to just put on the record, it's okay that I consult a humane officer and pass off the case. Uh, in that supporting capacity to them, uh, to do their jobs.
I don't see a problem with that.
We just have to be careful that though, if they tell us to take the animal, it becomes a huge cost to the town if we have to.
Great point. No, I totally understand that and I'm not looking to, you know, go and get every dog that, you know, doesn't have. You know, water for five minutes impounded. I'm talking about, you know, cases like. If I could share photos of a dog that was brought to my attention today, you know, it seems to be a severe case. You know, I I'm totally open for like initial warnings, things of that nature. But I mean, longstanding cases that that can't be corrected, you know, those ones probably ought to go to a humane officer and be addressed.
Right, just remember, Eddie, our space in our in our facility is limited. And that's one of our, that's one of our thoughts there, because if you, if we put in a lot of firm residents in our facility. We won't have any space. If you happen to come across two or three dogs, you have to, you have to put in there for a short period.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. Um, and another, another thing too, I just, you know, compliments, I think Angie hit it right on the head. Asking residents for help and trying to be careful and preserving our resources in town, uh, in regards to the sheriff. You know, some feedback I got from a caller today on this case was they had put in four or five calls to the sheriff, so. Just, you know, any good messaging out to the public that we have town officials and resources to handle some things. Would probably go a long way with the residents and. Our cost control.
Thank you. Yes, you're right.
All right, and and I just want to thank you guys so much for taking time to review those matters tonight.
No problem. I'm thinking, we can hear you finally.
Absolutely. Thank you guys.
Any other comment? May I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.